Pledge of lemons, student flag, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, and the idea symbol of perfect vision among my united persons.
Hallelujah, cats. Heavenly Father, hear my prayer. I honor and praise you. We thank you for all the blessings that we take for granted every day. Forgive us of our sins and in new ways. Today, we come to ask you for your blessing on this meeting. Guide and direct our board and our leaders to make the best decisions for our country, and our county, and our citizens. Grant us strength and wisdom in all that we do. Help us to love and forgive one another. For your protection over all those who preserve our freedoms, and for all of those who keep us safe. Thank you for what you have done, what you're doing, and what you're going to do in the mighty name of Jesus. I pray. Amen.
Mr. County Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's good to see you. We're out in the, in the room. It's kind of the first in a while, so appreciate that. Um, we'll begin with public comments. Um, three minutes each. Are there any public comments? Yes, ma'am.
My apologies. I was just told I was gonna be with Fire Marshal, but uh... My name is Debbie Brazis. I am the Admin Assistant for our Artesia Fire Department. I'm also on the Board of Directors for Artesia 9/11 Memorial. And we are proud and honored to be a part of bringing the Tunnel to Towers 9/11 Never Forget Mobile Exhibit to Artesia for four days, June 11th through June 14th. And they just kind of wanted me to tell you a little bit about our organization. And um, basically what we do, our mission is to um, help out our firefighters within our community in times of crisis. We like to financially assist them. And we also reach out to our veterans and try to provide needed services and resources for them. So, we have teamed up with um, Chase Foundation, written in red, TLC Two from the Heart Foundation, and um, the PY Foundation. So they were instrumental in um, helping us bring this exhibit to Artesia. Um, it is the twentieth anniversary of 9/11, so we want to be able to do our part so that uh, no one forgets 9/11. I've been in contact with um, the author of some children's books. She has written age-appropriate children's books about 9/11. She's also created a curriculum that we're gonna try to see if we can't get introduced into our schools. We feel that it's very important that education is power. We want to teach our children about 9/11 in an age-appropriate way, in the hopes that history doesn't repeat itself. So um, if y'all have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think I'm done.
Where do we get a copy of the, one of the age-appropriate books?
I actually forgot them in my office, so I do apologize. But I'm gonna make a special trip back here. And I'm gonna bring an entire set. I'll bring a few copies, and that way you all have a chance. I'll also send somebody a link with a PDF um, attachment for the curriculum, so that you guys can review that as well.
And where are you hosting the event?
The event will be in Artesia. It's going to be exhibit that's coming in on this eighty-three foot tractor trailer, folds out into an eleven-hundred square foot exhibit, and we'll put that in front of Ash Park, the Veterans' Wall outside of City Hall.
There you go.
If you'll get that information to the Artesia office, I'll bring it down tomorrow.
Absolutely, I'll certainly do that. And I will go ahead and leave some posters for you guys, so anybody that cares to display them, showing their support for us, we greatly appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Will the books be available at the uh, event?
I'm sorry?
Will the books be available at the event?
We're, we're working on trying to get uh, several books as giveaways for the kids. So um, the author, Kristy Boreal, is donating a hundred and fifty books of her first book. So we, we're starting there, but we're hoping to, you know, get some more donations so that we can get some of these books for the kids. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe even get them for sale or something. Brandon, you're good?
Me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ashley?
Commissioners, I wanted to come up and invite you guys out Thursday evening to the gazebo downtown on the Eddie County Courthouse lawn, Main Street. Um, alongside Carla Hammel, really did so much work to make this gazebo happen. And we would like to gift this gazebo back to the county in the celebration on Thursday evening, so. Anyone that can make it, we would love to have you there.
Five-thirty, right?
Yes, sir.
Five-thirty. And that'll also, after that, we'll kick off the season's Farmer's Market Thursday nights.
Yes, the downtown Farmer's and Makers Market, plus our new third Thursday event. There will be live music, there will be food, there will be farmers, makers, artists, community organizations. Come downtown, have some dinner, and just enjoy an evening with your community.
So if you give the Commissioners the gazebo, can the Commissioners give you the courthouse?
I mean, I am so sorry I said that.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Had to try.
Going down. Any other public comments, please?
Well done.
I did not receive any written comments either, so if there are no more comments, we'll move to the Service Awards. Um, we have, I think there are two individuals who were unable to attend, but we'd still like to recognize them. Uh, the first is Juan Zamorón from the Sheriff's Department with fifteen years. And then Michael Melton from the Detention Services with ten years. Last but not least in this recognition is uh, Mr. David Hartness from Fire Services with five years. David's out in the hall. Come on up and we'll present the award. Looks like the Fire Services team is here. Maybe David's buying burritos after the meeting or something, I don't know. Do you wanna photo op with the board in the hall with the fire team, or what? All right. Sorry. Photo op. See, I've got the whites on.
Yeah, absolutely. Hopefully it's a party.
What do you think? Sheriff, if you wanna change that some, I put it right here. Okay, I didn't want... It's just something for him to carry. And she just want, what she wants to do is have all this stuff when they go to that conference. And have it all ready, but she said just to run it by you and see if that's something...
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. If she, if she likes the wording, she's the attorney.
Okay.
You know, if she thinks that that's...
Appropriate.
Appropriate, yeah.
Okay.
I'm assuming it's...
I know, I'm, I'm certainly with it. We're all good, we all got, we're all good.
Well, see... No, I don't...
You don't think it's gonna be too bad?
Could be.
Yeah. That's, that's not very confident.
Right.
We're, we're being broadcast all over towns. Aren't we, Stephen? We're trying to be innocuous here.
Okay. Yes.
Ambiguous also.
Considering the sources, that's highly unlikely.
Are you talking about the sheriff yet?
No, I, what was Wesley Hooper talking to you about, Cass?
Yeah, that's right. At Wesley, he's a troublemaker.
Boy, did you feel that bus run over you?
Thank you, Commissioners, and thanks to Fire Services. Uh, good show of support there. Appreciate that. All right. We'll move into the trailing agenda. First item is to approve the Commission Meeting Minutes from May fourth, 2021.
Any comments or questions on Commission Meeting Minutes for May fourth? Having none, entertain a motion, we approve Commission Meeting Minutes from May fourth, 2021.
So moved.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, the next item is the Expense Approval Report for April 2021.
Questions or comments on Expense Approval Report? Having none, entertain a motion, we approve Expense Approval Report for April 2021.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. And uh, last in this section is the Purchase Card Approval List for April 2021.
Questions or comment on P Card? Having none, we entertain a motion, we approve Purchase Card Approval List for April 2021.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item on the agenda is the April 2021 Revenue Report, Ms. Roberta Smith.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the April twenty-one revenue report, for our grocery receipts tax, we collected one point seven million dollars uh, for oil and gas. We had collected two point nine. Uh, as you can see, for our grocery receipts tax, um, starting in March, um, the grocery receipts tax was gonna be going up because we're receiving that extra two GRT increments, the one-eighth and the one-twelfth. However, it did decrease um, quite a bit, three hundred thousand from last month. Um, and that's mainly due to the administrative, um, I think it's Code Fifty-four, waste, waste uh, reproduction, waste uh, production, something like that. That had gone down quite a bit, like thirty, thirty billion. Um, but we're still on track um, to be collected over what we've budgeted this year. Uh, we've collected a little over twelve million dollars, twelve point six million dollars. And we're still on track to be collecting about uh, fifteen million. For our oil and gas, right now, we currently sit at twenty-four million dollars. Um, we collected two point nine million this month. Um, I do expect that number to go up for me in June because oil prices have gone up for those last two months because we're, again, two months behind in collection. Uh, so I expect us to be sitting right now, if we end up collecting one point two for the next two months, we'll be at twenty-seven million. But I think that number will be closer to thirty, thirty-one million by the end of the year. Cause I expect we're gonna collect a little over three million for these last two months of the fiscal year. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Roberta? Having no questions, I will entertain a motion that we approve uh, the April 2021 Revenue Report.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Following the Revenue Report, we have the Budget versus Actuals for April Revenue Expenses. Ms. Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the month of April, uh, as you can see, for county overall, we've collected ninety-six percent of our total overall county revenue, and we spend about sixty-one percent. Um, again, we do have quite a bit of transfers of fifty-four million, so you know, if you take those out of the equation for expenses, we're sitting at like fifty percent overall county expenses. So, quite a bit lower than normal for this fiscal year. For general funds, we're already over a hundred percent collected for revenue. And obviously, that's still gonna, gonna continue to grow. In June is when we collect uh, the most amount of revenue for the entire year only because of, uh, we receive our PILT money, uh, and then we're gonna be receiving quite a bit in oil and gas and GRT. For our general fund expenses, uh, for April, we should be about eighty-three percent anyway. We're only at um, not even eighty-two percent, and that's with forty million dollars of transfers out of general fund. So again, if you take those transfers out of the equation, we're still sitting at sixty-seven percent. So really low for the year. We're gonna finish quite a bit under our general fund expense budget. And last but not least, our road department. We're sitting at about ninety-two percent collected. Uh, the majority of that money still that needs to be collected is from Lee County for our agreement with them for Red Campbell Road. Uh, Jason's been good about sending in those invoices, so we've been receiving those as he's been expending those. And then for expenses, he still sits about sixty-nine percent. Uh, but you're gonna see that, that number go up uh, quite a bit in May, and then especially June, cause he's gonna be trying to finish out those projects before the end of the year.
Lot, lot of activity, and we've got a lot of money encumbered. So we'll, again, conservative budget approach, and the, the teams for the county have been doing really, really well on their expenditures. So, um, I, I think it's a, it's a glowing report um, for all, all parties involved. So thank you very much.
I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
Questions for Roberta? Entertaining a motion, we approve Budget versus Actual?
So moved.
Motion in two seconds, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
Mr. Tabor, are we okay on number four?
In principle, I don't think there's a problem doing it. I, I do need to make some adjustments to the agreement that you'll see in our Agreement Section. There are several things that are not appropriate.
We can do this one, and then we'll, we'll pull the...
Pull the agreement, and I can make, they're not major changes. It's timing on payments, those kind of things that we've gotta be careful of.
Can we approve it based on...
I think we can.
Of your, of your changes and...
Is that okay with you, Josh? That'll work. I think that's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, this purchase is gonna be out of the Fire Excise Sixty Percent. It's for Web EOC. It's a program that we utilize for emergency management and large-scale operations. It's a five-year agreement, and it breaks down into the line items as displayed over the next five years. Any questions?
Any questions for Josh? Okay. Having no questions, we're going to entertain a motion to approve the Fire Excise Fund Application to Purchase Five-Year Subscription for Web EOC Software with the appropriate changes done...
To the agreement itself.
To the agreement itself.
Which we're gonna have to pull from the...
This will authorize the use of the funds, and then we'll adjust the agreement that goes with it.
So we just need to pull it out of the resolution?
Yeah, and consent again.
Okay, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Commissioners, I have that um, grand application. There are three copies, and if each Commissioner would sign each of the three copies and return that... Thank you. Thanks, Josh. All right. The next item is the Resolution and Consent, um, Agreement Consent Agenda. And we would pull Item B two...
Correct.
Out of that section for adjustment, and then we'll bring it back at a subsequent Commission Meeting for approval.
Okay, that's A twenty-one dash fifty, correct?
A twenty-one dash fifty, Webco, Web Echo, Web EOC Subscription Agreement.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we...
I have a couple of questions about A twenty-one forty-one. I could real quickly ask them now, or we can pull it and discuss it.
We better pull it and discuss it, probably. So, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda as presented, pulling Items A twenty-one dash forty-one and A twenty-one dash fifty for discussion.
All right, so moved.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
Commissioner Beard, I guess we'll maybe discuss uh, A twenty-one forty-one.
I have the name. I've heard lots of talk about Cherry Park, Cherry Lane Park versus Tracy Park. Uh, I know there's a little bit of consternation about that, uh, and I don't know the history of it. And I know after a conversation I had with one of the Tracys recently, that they would like to uh, see that done. Was it ever Tracy Park to begin with?
No.
Sawyer, I believe.
Cherry Lane Park, then it was Tom, or Sawyer Park. And then we moved it back because the agreement, the original, years ago when they donated it...
Donation agreement.
Yeah.
It's gonna be known as Cherry Lane Park back then. So we had to move it back.
And I did contact uh, Ms. Tracy whenever we moved it back to Cherry Lane Park. She was very upset that it had gotten changed in the first place because of the agreement that was in place with the county. And so um, the Commission voted to change it back to Cherry Lane Park.
Very good.
We did that last, late last year, early this year.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion that we approve A twenty-one forty-one.
So moved.
Or second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
And I guess...
A twenty-one fifty will, will...
Bring back.
Bring it back, um, probably the next Commission Meeting after.
Okay.
County Attorney has a chance to modify the, some of the conditions in that agreement.
Do we need to table that or anything, or just, or just leave it?
Table it to be brought back at a later Commission Meeting.
Okay, entertain a motion that we approve, or that we table A twenty-one fifty until a later meeting, after which the changes can be made.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Rodova?
Yes.
All right, moving right along. Department Updates. Open it for Departments. Mr. Hooper.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, um, I thought I'd give a little bit of an update on the Southeast Loop. I know that there's been some complaints as far as traffic control goes to the County Manager and probably to you all, and I apologize for that. There was a little bit of a communication problem, um, that I think we got worked out. There'll be some new signage put up for local traffic to be able to access. We're having a meeting with the con, the Constructors and the Consultants tomorrow morning, and hopefully they'll get some signs put up. There has been some through traffic that's gone through, like the Sheriff Posse Arena, cut the fence, tore down about fifty foot of it that we've gotta go back and fix. But uh, Jason is helping us with that, putting some barricades up there, so we hope to stop the fence cutting and going around the barricades and things. So um, I've, I've went out and talked to a few of the residents out there and drove them through the project and showed them, you know, how to get through it. And it is kind of um, rough and um, not very, not the best. But eventually, when we get it done, um, it's gonna be really good. And I just asked for their patience, and if they had any issues, to please give me a call, and we'll try to work it out. Um, I'd also like to thank the Sheriff. He's helped us a bunch out there. I know they're very busy. But the through traffic that's been cutting the fence and stuff, they've been out there ticketing and trying to get the control of that area so that uh, it's safe.
Any other questions for Wes? What's the schedule on that, more or less?
If it's okay, I'd have, they re, they redid the schedule, and that's something that we've gotta talk to them, to the contractors about tomorrow. Um, there are extensions that they're asking for. And partly, that has to do with, uh, there's a gas line there that we can't figure out whose it is that needs to be relocated. And then there's a water line that the city owns. And we've gotta get that relocated also. But um, I can't tell you the exact date right now. I'd have to look at it and then let you know what they're um, asking for.
Okay.
Other updates? Fire Services, Mr. Mack.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I had Mr. Harvey come down to give you all an update on the Fire Investigation Task Force, and then we have a couple other items.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners, County Manager. Um, we've been busy, for sure. Um, for sure, we've had twenty-one callouts so far. Um, so a majority of those being accidental, which is good. Um, we've got the detectives working on a couple of open cases, but nothing too crazy. Um, so far, we were at a hundred and thirty-two since two thousand nineteen, so we're staying very, very busy. Um, we still have about twenty members or so on the team. Um, everybody's still doing three to four hours training a month. And now that COVID's finally doing its thing, we're gonna go back to in-person quarterly stuff so we can actually do hands-on stuff, so. Other than that, that's about it. If y'all have any questions...
Share with them the, the closure rate, the success rates.
Um, so right now, um, all of our, the, the kind of national average is about thirty percent determination rate, give or take, depending on who you talk to. Um, and right now, we're sitting at about ninety-four percent. So um, we're, we have one or two that are undetermined. We're still under investigation, being that they're open. Um, we, we know the cause, which is good for us. We can put a cause on it, or a determination, and then we can turn it over. So that still counts for us as a determination, and then the prosecution and stuff goes through them. So um, we're at about ninety-three, ninety-four percent. So we're about sixty percent higher than the rest of nationwide.
Speaks well of the team and the, the training and the skill sets that are, that are part of the team and the activity of the team.
Yes, sir. We actually had, uh, also, we had um, about three fires that we actually called in. We actually have two members of ATF now, um, that are on our team. Um, one is out of Roswell, and then the other is um, with APD. Um, he's a, a field officer. Um, we actually had three cases that we needed ATF and electrical engineer to come and, and help us with, just to verify our findings. Um, we came down, um, the Sheriff's Office had one of the cases, and then APD had two of them. They came down. Um, he came all the way from Puerto Rico to come and check out our stuff for us. Um, he came down, he x-rayed all of our stuff. We spent three days with him, tearing stuff apart. Um, and he actually walked us through everything. Um, and from his findings, we didn't have any discrepancies from what we found to what he found. Um, so that was really good. He's already called me like three times, wanting to know when he can come back.
Puerto Rico to...
I was gonna say, shouldn't it be the other way?
I told him we do training down there, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe not.
He said it like Eddie County, I don't know. I just asked the same question, so. Um, but we're, we're doing really good. Um, hopefully with, with the Pharaohs that everybody's got now, Sheriff's Office with their x-ray, the one that we're gonna get. I mean, we're, I talked to a private investigator yesterday, and um, apparently, they don't do scene documentation like we do. Um, because we, we three-sixty everything, we drone everything, we Pharaoh everything. Um, we have a two-scale sketch on everything. So, they said they go in and take pictures and look, and about leave, and that's about it, so. We're pretty, pretty thorough in what we do, and everybody is, the state hardly won't even come down here anymore. Um, the fire y'all had here in Crawsbet, we came and took care of. Um, and I called the state, and their question was, why are you on the phone with me? So, I said, y'all handle it, do your thing, and call us if you need help, so.
Let's, let's keep it like that.
Yeah. That's my plan.
That's great.
So that shows good on our part, like you said.
Absolutely. Well done. Well done. Any questions for Fire Services?
No, I'm very impressed with the numbers, you know, I mean, being sixty percent higher than the rest of the nation, you should be very proud, so great job.
Thank you.
So that, uh, will that reflect on our, uh, score to help with the insurance?
Yes, sir. The team helps us tremendously.
The ISOs, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause we'll go anywhere in Eddy County, we cover basically the whole county, so showing the, the different, um, the follow-up and the thoroughness of not just going, putting it out, and saying it's undetermined, um, which is what has happened in the past. We can actually reflect that and show it.
So that those, it'll pay dividends going forward, so that's great.
That's great.
That needs to be made very public, so.
I agree.
Thank you.
So just a couple of other things this weekend, Saturday, um, Loving's having a meet the officer day, and they're having all the first responders out, so we'll have some staff down there. It's from ten AM to two PM at the Memorial Park over by the fire station on Fourth Street. Um, so if y'all are interested. Also, the Permian Basin Road Safety Coalition will be hosting a event here on June tenth out at our facility. There'll be a formal invite to all the commissioners and gays working on a quorum. So they're gonna be donating some more equipment for our use on emergency scenes. The Artesia Fire Department educational books that she had mentioned earlier, we're gonna assist them in purchasing those to be sure that they get out to the schools. We're actively working on number counts for Carlsbad and Loving, and then they have numbers for Artesia. It'll be kindergarten through fifth grade that we provide that for, and we're gonna do that as part of our fire prevention this year, since we didn't do too much. And then also just a reminder to the community, be safe with fireworks. Um, there was a big discussion going on about looking at putting some restrictions on them, and then, um, Kevin Hope got the rein to come in by bringing up the topic. So we just ask everybody to be safe, participate in a safe area, make sure it's clear, clear around your houses, um, remember your neighbors, and enjoy yourselves. And then I'll be going down to Midland in the next couple of weeks to the Permian Basin Road Safety Coalition. They wanna do an interview with us about the equipment they've provided, the service we provide, and how we partner with the local counties here in New Mexico and in Texas to enhance oil filter response. Uh, Malaga and Otis's tankers that we ordered about fourteen months ago are ready for a final inspection here in the next month, probably mid to late June. They look really nice, and then we'll plan to send two people. They'll be going to Florida, so you guys will see those travel agendas coming up. That's all I've got.
No, I think they, they've been busy.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Josh. Thank you. Other department updates? Is he coming, or is he? Public Works, Mister Burns.
Stand for questions. Chairman, Commissioners, um, as previous reported, we've got a lot going on right now. Lots of different areas, uh, lots of different directions, and we plan on having a lot done here in the next six weeks. So, um, all the way from, we have Hildago and Dark Canyon both ongoing right now. We just finished Black River Village from Old Cavern to the highway. Uh, Old Cavern's still ongoing. They're fixing shoulders, getting ready to, uh, finish taming that. Um, we're gonna be finalizing, uh, we're out on Twin Wells right now, um, and traffic's back. We're having issues keeping traffic off our roads while we're trying to, um, roll them in and, and chip seal them, and it's, uh, it's getting back to challenging, so.
Illinois Camp?
Illinois Camp's going well. That one's, uh, gonna be finished up this week, so that one, that one's gonna be a great improvement. So we've got several, several different areas, so if y'all hear anything, it's.
West Loop's near, near kickoff.
Near kickoff, so we're.
When do you think the West Loop will kickoff?
We're doing the intersection of Hildago and the West Loop here within the next couple of weeks, so I don't know if that'll be a official kickoff, but it's where we're starting. And then we have, uh, what we have is we have two professional, um, engineers designing it, one starting on the north, one starting on the south. And then we're gonna probably kick both those off, um, hopefully around August is when we're gonna get those out and procure them and break ground on both ends there. We're also have our planning phase going on through the, uh, um, BLM piece, getting our surveys updated and, uh, updating everything we need for them to get them to bless it as well. So we're working on that, and, uh, just as all one big, we also have got the city to agree to partner with us, and we'll be bringing that MOU before you at your next meeting, so, soon.
Good.
Soon.
I've got a question. On that road, uh, I forget the road that you dealt with, but where you went out and talked with that farmer?
Which one?
Well, we had a big rainstorm.
Oh, uh, yeah, FEMA projects, FEMA projects is going good.
We obviously had the big rains, I mean, it was a rainstorm.
It was raining.
Uh, but there was a lot of water down there. Did we notice if, if what he was worried about happened, or, or did it work pretty good?
We actually helped him, and he just was.
Okay.
What we're seeing is when we, a lot of these improvements, we're going out and changing the norm and, and trying to improve these things, and, and a lot of our citizens don't, they, they think that we're impeding them and what's normal to them, and that's what upsets them. We actually helped that farmer 'cause that water was coming across from his farmland and going into his barn, and we put that road in the way now, and it's kinda blocking it and diverting it from his house and his barn. He just, so we kinda had to go explain that to him. I asked the Lord for some rain to show him.
Well, that team just hit it a little farther.
Get another upset farmer, we might.
How much, how much? How mu, how much wider did you make Illinois Camp? 'Cause it's wider it was. It's good. It's a lot safer.
As wide as specified.
That's right.
It was as wide as it originally was.
But you went back to the original, because what it had done is the shoulders had been eaten off so much, the road was so dang narrow.
That's exactly right.
And it's, and it's, and it's great.
We really did, I mean, all joking aside, it really was that wide before, and I mean, that's, all of our roads have been eaten, and, and, and they, and they were that wide before, and the trucks that have peeled, pulled off and peeled off so long over time, I mean, they were always originally that wide, and we're just taking them back to what they originally were.
But, yeah, it was so dangerous before.
It really was. And that's not the only one. I mean, Illinois Camp, Black River was the exact same way, that we were able to get out there and get that one back to the original width, and, um, Dark Canyon's gonna be another one. Hildago, uh, we were driving down Hildago yesterday, and just the trucks would have to pull off to the side to pass each other, and getting that back to the original width is gonna be just a great safety improvement.
So, so with that improvement comes poor driver behaviors and excessive speed on those roads. Um, Red Campbell Road's a perfect example of it. That's now almost like I-ten through Houston, right?
It is, it's fast.
Fast as you can go. So, we ask the citizens to obey the posted speed limits and drive sensibly.
Where the sheriff will take care of that. He's been doing a very good job. They were actually out on our Illinois Camp project the other day, and we really appreciate them, uh, and their presence to help kinda, like I said, traffic's back, and it's becoming a problem, and it's a safety concern that we have on some of these projects. So, 'cause our first concern is our people out there working on them, so we, and these guys don't pay attention, and they don't see our traffic control, and they don't slow down. So.
They ignore signs, too.
They absolutely do. Absolutely do.
Can we do something possibly, I know you're out there working on some of this, but I've kinda got some firsthand experience on some of that. As soon as you guys disappear, they know it. Whether CB radios are still in effect, can we maybe put some undercover kinda something and get some tickets written when they're not seeing it coming?
Well, um.
I wouldn't wanna put you on this.
Right. You know, and we, I, I have a finite amount of resources, and, and my, my CAT team is unfortunately not as big as I would like it to be. Uh, but we, we move from place to place, and it's kinda like whack-a-mole, you know? But that's the one thing, is folks don't ever know where we're gonna show up. And the other part of the, the undercover part is I don't, it's my own personal belief and, and undershare purpose, but we don't, we don't like those, uh, ghost car type things. Uh, we like high visibility patrol. We feel like that's the, the most effective. So all of our units that are actually out there running traffic are well-marked, and you know that that's the sheriff's office there. Um, but we are, we do have a couple of things in the works right now that we're, like with the Posse Arena, that's a big problem. That's a powder keg right there. And we have, we have some things in the works, Commissioner, uh, along the lines of what you're saying, but, but still maintaining what the, the vision that the chief and I have for, uh, our enforcement and utilizing our, our resources as best we can.
Those guys know where, where those vehicles are, you know? I'd like somebody to be surprised and make the comment, we didn't even know you guys were out here.
We tried.
As you're riding my ticket, yes.
We tried. I've been surprised a couple times. So, um, I didn't know.
Say it's not so.
Yeah. Commissioner, those posted speed limits are very important.
I, I understand that now.
What is the speed limit on Red Campbell Road?
The flow of traffic.
Forty-five into forty-five?
No, um, I think it's fifty-five, is what we've posted on with the improvement that we did. It's posted fifty-five. And most of them are, what we've tried to do is our arterials, we're keeping them at fifty-five, our collectors are forty-five, and all of our others are, we try to keep them at thirty-five. And there's some that are, are locals that are at forty-five, but I mean, it's, we do try to keep them thirty-five, forty-five, but the, uh, arterials will keep up fifty-five with the way we've improved them and maintenance them. They're safe that they can do that now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And you've reminded them that you've got the first new Eddy County sign up.
Haven't told them what it is yet. Thanks, Al. We're just going for a drive out into the boonies. They might be surprised.
No, we're not. So the signs that, that y'all had asked for and, and, uh, approved, the first one is now installed out on the county line on sixty-two and eighty. And, um, I think Mister Burns has invited all of you after the commission meeting to go out for a photo op. It'll be cool. Might be breezy. Anyway, so we'll, we'll organize how to, how to get everybody out there that would like to go after the meeting. And, uh, you can see the new, the new signs, logos, and the rest of those will be going up around the county in the coming weeks.
They look really nice. They're, I think they're gonna achieve what y'all were after.
Rogers tax money at work.
Yes, sir.
I hope the old ones got saved, because those are kind of iconic.
Talk later. Depends on which one. You might talk to him later. Um, no more department updates, then we'll have our legislative update.
Mister Chairman, Commissioners, see everybody this morning. Uh, you know, get a little disclaimer before we get started here. I have a legislative update that's very short, and then I have various other items that I know you're interested in, that I'd like to give you a report on. First of all, LFC is meeting today. Uh, they're gonna be meeting for the next few days, uh, through Friday, uh, on one of their interim committee meetings. Uh, today, they're in Truth or Consequences at the, uh, New Mexico State Veterans Home. They'll be looking that over. Then tomorrow, they'll be at the Spaceport, uh, looking at where all of our tax dollars are being spent very generously and in an efficient way. That's just my two cents. But, uh, anyway, they'll be talking about that tomorrow. Then on Wednesday, uh, they'll be over into, uh, Las Cruces, where they'll be for a couple of days, uh, talking basically about different policies, border economics. Um, on Thursday, they'll be covering, and I'm just hitting some high spots, they'll be covering the, uh, local school districts' performance and, and what their fina, finance reports look at. Then one probably the, we're most interested in is their meeting on Friday, where they'll be addressing some of the CARES Act money and, and some of the, uh, updates on how that's being spent. Uh, there's a four-hundred-and-thirty-two million dollar spending plan tied to, uh, some of those items for the state. Uh, and then also, they'll be looking at their monthly, uh, financials and reports from the different departments, and I'll be covering that virtually uh, from here on, on those meetings. So, that's kinda where we are with LFC. Okay? Uh, then I'm gonna segue into a couple of items of interest that, uh, some of you have seen some of my emails out to you on. Uh, first and foremost, a couple of weeks ago, I went to Tukumkari, attended a meeting with New Mexico Cattle Growers Association where there was a presentation, uh, being given by the American Stewards of Liberty on the new thirty, what they're calling the Thirty Thirty, uh, uh, movement program, which was, uh, actually enacted through, uh, Executive Order fourteen zero zero eight, which is titled "Tackling the Climate Crisis at Home," and I think the key phrase is "and abroad." So this is basically not just affecting, uh, the United States, but it's a worldwide movement in how it to address our, uh, supposedly climate change issue. This movement is to permanently conserve thirty percent of America's land, water, and oceans. And that's to put thirty percent of the land, they believe, if, if it's done, uh, that thirty percent of the land being put into conservation measures and taken out would help to resolve or greatly, uh, help in the climate change issue. Uh, and this would be done, uh, thirty percent of that land by the year, and where the name comes from, by the year two thousand and thirty. Uh, that's a pretty tight window, especially when you get my age, things go pretty fast. So, uh, in nine more years, it has to be done, and so that's, that's a pretty, uh, aggressive, uh, I think, plan that they're looking at. Uh, one of the things that is being stressed is that this would be on public lands and public waters. Uh, when on the face value and what we've heard and, and looked at, that's, that's, that's all fine and well. But when you're from New Mexico, where you have a lot of public land that we realize a lot of income off of, uh, that, that stands a potentially impacting us greatly as far as a tax base and things like that. Then as we segue into the private, uh, sector in those lands, it proposes another set of challenges, which means that as we've seen in other conservation programs, such as the CRP and things like that, those were good prog, programs with well intention, but they were temporary programs that paid actual landowners fees to pull, put their lands into conservation. If they do this, to keep in mind, this would be permanent, stressing permanent conservation plans, where they would pay the private landowner a fee to put his lands into some type of conservation easements, which would also take a lot of land out of the tax base and out of production, might I mention, for, uh, things such as what we eat. Um, and, and I think that to me and a guy that's slightly overweight, that's important, okay, that I have plenty to eat. And so, when you do that, I think the things that the public realizes is that it, on the surface, it looks well, but at the, on the bottom line is, it costs us all money. It not only costs us money in taxes, but it drives food cost, it drives fuel cost, it drives a lot of cost up. And so there, we have to look at all options. Uh, so, as we look at this from the side of the cattle growers and where we were, uh, with the presentation, American Stewards for Liberty, and actually, all of you should have a copy of this presentation that we, we were fortunate to, to see there. Uh, one of the things I wanna segue into is this is an issue that NACO is also following very closely. And, uh, coincidence as it may be, uh, Jonathan Shuffield, who's the director of Public Lands for the Western Region, is the one that's closely following this issue. And what I mean by coincidence, Jonathan worked in, uh, Representative Pierce's office in Washington for many years, and when he was just a wee child, he and I became very closely acquainted, and we're, we're very good friends, and we stay in contact. John's on top of this, and he, Jonathan is, and he is very good at what he does. John's on top of this and he, Jonathan is, and he is very good at what he does. And he's assured me that he will make sure in Washington as this thing moves forward that he'll keep me informed on this. And he and I will be in conti- continuous, uh, communication on it. Just to give you a little bit of degree of comfort there. It's a degree of comfort for me also. So to have him there because I know the type of individual he is and he truly looks after the, our Western interest and land interest. So we'll go from that into, uh, other things such as ESA, Endangered Species, uh, issues. Uh, as some of the, of you are aware, I've been following the Mexican wolf issue very closely. Uh, at the present time, they're, they're doing a revision of what they call a ten J rule, which is associated with Endangered Species Act. And this, this change in this rule has to do with the take of the wolf. And that means wolves that are problems or in areas they shouldn't be in and how they take that. When they originally wrote the rule, uh, they had some, from what we understand, some legal and technical issues in that rule. And so now they have gotten, uh, through lawsuits and everything, now they've been, uh, the, they, being the Fish and Wildlife Service, has had to go back into a public, uh, process of being able to redo that. Uh, I am on that committee. We are currently working on the, um, on the supplemental environmental impact statement. Uh, many meetings on that, covers a lot of stuff. And of course, as in all public procedures, we have to go through that impact, impact statement before they can actually adjust the rule. Uh, one of the things we were running up on a deadline of July the twenty-first, uh, July of twenty twenty-one to have this completed, the Arizona District Court granted an extension to that and now they've moved it a year out. And so, uh, we're under a little less of a time constraint. But, but to let you know, uh, by July of first of two thousand and twenty-two, we're supposed to have a final rule completed. And, uh, this deals with a lot of things I won't get into with the commission meeting. It just takes too much time. But environmental impacts, the take, the size of ranches, how that correlates with a, you know, one wolf on a ranch with a guy that has thirty cattle or a guy that has three thousand cattle, you know, those are all things that's, that are really tough to get into and, and to, uh, to, you know, weed out all the, all the details. But it, it's being done. And, uh, I feel very privileged. Uh, Howard Hutchison, who's with, uh, who actually represents us on several of these committees is very smart man. He's working on this with us and, and so, uh, we're meeting on a monthly basis periodically. And we have a schedule that we will meet every month, uh, through this year and into the first of next year, getting that process done. Okay? Any questions on the wolf issue? Okay. Uh, kinda go into OCD and to the Oil Conservation Division. As you know, uh, week, uh, week ago, um, they came out with their new methane rule, putting it into effect, which goes into effect on May the twenty-fifth. Uh, one of the things that some of the folks in the industry were concerned about is a tight window and how to, uh, be compliant with this rule. And the forms that are out there are available that the operators are going to have to fill out to be compliant with the issue. Uh, those are out and the OCD has a site that you can go into and it's have an FAQ, uh, site where a lot of the, uh, companies are submitting questions about these forms and how they do them and things. And I can say that the OCD at this time seems to be working very cooperatively with the operators and trying to do that. NMED, wait, I'm sorry.
There was a, a provision in that, um, historically the wells that were drilled twenty twelve and older were exempt from these rules. I had heard that that had been taken out of this latest provision. Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it.
Okay. So even the...
It changed it in the last, it could appear to be a bait and switch. What was originally proposed is not what wound up on the table at the end of the day.
So like a five barrel stripper that was drilled nineteen seventy-two is gonna be under the same? Can you explain the bait and switch? I don't.
So several, several agencies worked in concurrence to come up with a proposed set of rules and everybody thought they had the, the final version. And then when they were issued, the version that came out took out basically the stripper exemptions. And so there were no exemptions. Everybody was in the pool. And that was not what was originally proposed and agreed to by the participants that, that went into that. So it, it felt like, uh, yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna listen to you. We're gonna do what you're gonna, yeah, we got your input. There you go. We don't care. That's what it felt like.
That's cause that's what it was.
They wouldn't really do that in Santa Fe, would they?
I can't speak to that, sir. All I know is what wound up, at the end of the day, there were no exemptions that were included.
I've got a myriad of questions, but I'll hold them till another, another time.
We'll be able to address those.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one of the things that, uh, we, we, like I said, we do know is there was a tight window there on the forms and, and it was very, it's very concerning when you, addressing your question, Mr. Chairman, is that it's very concerning the, the impact on the small operators. When we know that the small operators carry a huge amount of the responsibility out there in the field for those wells and the income that's generated from those wells. Uh, it's gonna be a, it's, i- 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 and it's gonna be a bookkeep, bookkeeping nightmare on both sides. Not only on the operators, but also for the OCD and their limited staff and how they track this. And, and my simple way of thinking is the cost benefit here and what we're looking at. And, and it's, it's very challenging to connect those two dots. Uh, the benefits of trying to do this and the cost of trying to do this and what it actually looks like and what's being accomplished. And so, uh, it's, it's going to be very challenging. OCD is very limited in staff, very limited in staff. And being able to track all this and keep track of it and accomplish the goals that were set out are gonna be tremendous. And as I talked about that, now I'm gonna move over to the Environment Department. Environment Department's on the same path right now of trying to do the new, their new emissions methane rule. And so those will be even more onerous on industry as far as being able to try to get some of this done and accomplished in the timeframes that they need to do it. Industry has been, in New Mexico, I'll say this, as a, as an industry, the oil and gas industry in New Mexico has been a trendsetter. I mean, we are, we are of course, one of the most, we are the busiest, uh, oilfield in, in the United States. And at the same time, we have done the best job of decreasing methane emissions than anyone out there. And when you put those in perspective to what the common automobiles are, are, are putting out and what industry's done to alleviate or minimize those emissions, it's huge. Uh, and then you wanna put in, what I always like to do and put in the plug is, is the money that's being generated from this industry and what's being done on the other side to try to accommodate the needs of everyone. It's, it's a big deal, big deal. So that's my speech.
Would it, uh, be safe to say this is probably gonna cause a exponential increase in orphaned wells?
I think, Mr. Beard, I think there's a potential for that. I do. And, and that, that, that particular thought has been brought out is in, in, you know, from both sides. Uh, some, some of the operators, in fact, matter, just won't be able to afford to do these kinda things. So what will happen in that case, and that opens a whole nother conversation, but at the same time, to answer your question, it has a potential to do that. It most certainly does.
We call them all bonds.
A- 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 and then it becomes, that's the issue of the bonding issue becomes a whole nother part of that. Is it the cost of those and is it gonna be enough money there to do what needs to be done to take care of those orphaned wells? And that opens up another box of Pandora's. I'm going to have the dubious honor of being on the radio in Artesia tomorrow morning with Commissioner Beard, Commissioner Henry, talking about a lot of these things. I appreciate that. I think it's a great opportunity, uh, to let you know tomorrow night I'll be meeting with the Fair Board, talking about the fairgrounds in Artesia and some of the options we may be looking at there as far as that property and what it looks like. So.
Remind me to turn my phone off.
You might wanna turn. Nah, I think it's all gonna be good. I, I, it'll all be good. So, uh, we're very fortunate.
If I'm young, I'll give you an auto call.
Very fortunate. Yeah, we're very fortunate. We have some great people there and, and, uh, I, I feel very positive things will go, go further. You can't make everybody happy, but we'll, I think the most of the part, it'll be a good thing. So. Okay? Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fannin. Next item on the agenda is the, um, travel request consent agenda. We have no, uh, prior ones. We just have the one future travel.
Any questions for the travel request consent agenda? Having none, we entertain a motion to approve the travel request consent agenda as presented. So moved in a, in a second, right along in here. Please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McTatchen?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, we have no emergency business at this time, so we'll move to legislators and elected official comments. Sheriff Cage.
Good morning, Commissioners. We, uh, going along with, with the, the question that Commissioner Beard had, we, uh, we've been spread thin, but it's a good thing with the, uh, traffic enforcement because that means that the road department, public works are getting a lot done, which is amazing. Um, yeah, the complaints are coming in to the sheriff's office though nonstop on some of these areas, like especially the, uh, in the area around Refinery Road, Posse Arena, all that stuff. That's a, that's a big issue. It's a, but we're doing our best to resolve it. And I have been remiss. I was supposed to come up with some dates, uh, for y'all to come out to the sheriff's office and have a demonstration. Life got in the way. Things were going on. So, um, we, we talked about a Friday. Is that still good for everybody? Is a Friday the best day? I think county manager said that would be a, a, a good day for most everybody. Okay. So we'll, um, we'll come up with a date, the county manager and I, um, for y'all to come out and have a demo of our new technology out at the sheriff's office. We'll run you through the simulator and you can kill zombies or, or something like that. And, uh, it actually has a zombie mode amazingly. But that might be a little more palatable than...
Where's the commissioner? Oh, he's up, sheriff's office. Doing simulation training.
Um, uh, with the Pharaoh up and running, we have training going on for that. Uh, that's the, uh, three D, um, s- the scanner that, that we purchased. Um, a lot of good things are going on. Um, one, I wa- I was invited by the D- the DPS secretary. And me and a, a police chief have, we, we had our initial meeting. And what we're gonna try and do is get ahead of the curve on the, um, the flavor of the day for the legislature, which is police reform, law enforcement reform. Um, we're gonna try and get together a bill of our own, um, that is, has some bipartisan sponsorship with it, bipartisan buy-in. Uh, we're, we're reaching out to, to some folks for that. And we're gonna, we're gonna have the hard sell, I'm gonna have the hard sell of, of getting it in through the sheriffs, through sheriff's association, and the chief is gonna have a hard time because he's gotta get it through all the chiefs. Um, I'm sure we won't have buy-in from everybody, but th- these are things that we have to do because we're either gonna have to address it or the legislature's gonna address it for us. And, um, uh, things like, uh, use of force issues. Obviously, we don't use chokeholds anymore, but I guess some people are confused and think that we do. So we have to ensure that that's in, in some of this, you know, that our bill saying we won't use chokeholds, which of course we don't do anyway. So that's coming up. Uh, we are waiting, still waiting on, uh, vehicles. We've got some that are limping along. Y'all graciously allowed us to purchase vehicles. However, they're not, uh, they're not even in production yet sadly. A GM is way behind. But we're gonna, when they do finally do it, we're gonna get a whole bunch. And we'll get our fleet updated and, and all of that. Um, we're still working real well with all of our outside agencies, um, trying to, to do the best we can. Things are picking up. I don't know if, uh, y'all have any specific questions for me about what's going on in the county, but it's an update, Cass. Anyway, we, uh, if you do, please get with me and I'll be happy to answer them for you. And, uh, that's all I have.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Appreciate you. Other elected officials, Ms. Darlene?
I just wanna let people know that the upcoming Congressional District One election is on June first. It is not in Eddie County. It is mainly the Albuquerque area, a little bit surrounding that. But we've had several people coming in wanting to vote or asking, I got an email this morning about the election. So that election is not for us on June first. So.
That's the replacement for...
That's the replacement for Deb Haugland. And, uh, I appreciate everybody wanting to get out and vote. Uh, we will have one in November. So.
Just not our district.
Not our district. No.
Don't start now.
We didn't send everybody a ballot in the mail. Let's be clear about that. That was applications.
You can, you can direct, you can direct them to participate in the election in another way.
Correct.
Other than their vote.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Laurie, you're good? Okay. All right. Um, move on then to county manager comments. Uh, just a couple of quick items. We had another meeting with a very broad group regarding the Binewell. Secretary Props from EMNerd was on, uh, the governor's. One of her senior advisors, Carolyn Burkle, was there. We had DFA on, uh, we had Representative Aunt Catherine Brown and Senator, uh, Gay Kernon on the call, as well as the city, myself. And we're, as well as the wood group, we've, we asked them to, hey, these, these folks gotta have skin in the game. So we s- we saw their proposal. We saw their, we actually got to talk to people about what has happened in terms of the work done today, the cost and things like that, and what would be their final proposal. We also have a draft agreement from the secretary, uh, from EMNerd that I'll bring to commission next meeting for consideration and approval, which basically would commit the local governments, the city of Carlsbad will have to do the same thing to, um, our share of three million dollars, so one point five million dollars. From each Eddie County, city of Carlsbad, the state is bringing another eighteen million dollars, five million dollars from EMNerd, from two different line items, and ten million dollars from, um, Secretary Sandoval has agreed to take the excise tax one more year, ten million dollars from, from that and put it to the Binewell. So we, we wanted to honor our association and agreements with Secretary Sandoval. He's been very good to Eddie County. We wanted to, we wanted to let him know we appreciate his, his efforts and generosity. So I, I believe that never say this is it forever, but this should be it forever. And I'll share more of that with you at the next meeting. So just let you know that's in the works. The other big item is, um, the American Rescue Plan Act or A, A, ARPA. Too many damn acronyms. American Rescue Plan. In that, in that federal stimulus package, there are sixty-five billion dollars earmarked for direct payments to counties. Doesn't go through the state and go direct to every county in the nation who is registered. Um, so Eddie County has registered, Ms. Roberta got us registered, and then Commissioner, or Chairman McCutcheon signed on as the au- authorizing individual. So when US Treasury releases those monies, and we think potentially by the end of the month, first part of July, we'll get, and it's population based, so we'll get our direct monies. We're, we're in early stages of contemplating how best to use those monies. It'll come in two tranches. The first payment is fifty percent and the second will come a year after that. Those monies have to be fully encumbered by the end of December twenty twenty-four and fully expended by the end of December twenty twenty-six. So we have some time to look at how to apply that. Those monies, invest those monies in, in our communities. There are US Treasury and the legislation has been written to try and make it broad enough to, to apply liberally. But there are still some guidelines that have to be met, some things that it can be used for. And then as with grant monies, there's always a reporting and accounting of how those monies were invested. And if it doesn't meet the criteria, then, then you have to give it back. So we're gonna try and avoid all those pitfalls. We'll put a small group together to con- Um, we'll put a small group together to consider how best to apply those monies. And then, um, I would expect that we would bring a list of recommendations to the commission on how to apply those monies for consideration and approval. So early days right now, but we have all of the mechanics and technical aspects in place to receive our monies, um, whenever the Treasury releases them, and then we'll come back with it with some more updates. Um, it's probably enough to say about that at this point. I just close with, I really appreciate all of the departments' efforts. We're here in May, we're, we're coming up on the end of the fiscal year. Um, we, we got our interim budget approved by the commission last week. You went to the state, the state approved, or they, it's, it uploaded into the, into the system and we haven't gotten any questions back, so we expect that it'll be approved. Um, but with reports of Ms. Roberta sharing this morning, where we're at, last year was a very conservative budget. And to see that we're doing as well as we are while continuing to provide all the services that we have through what's been a really difficult year with the pandemic, Eddy County Services were open every day, normal business hours. We had some restrictions during some tough points, but the citizens were able to get access to all of those services when and as they needed them. And we've done a tremendous amount of, uh, infrastructure work with road improvements across the county. Um, there was a nice article in the paper that, uh, about, you know, featuring Mr. Burns and, and the roads, and so there were some highlights in there, so help people in the community understand where that's going, so.
Burns was in the paper and it wasn't in the police bladder?
Hard as that is to believe.
I did, I did.
Yeah, I was shocked as you...
That's amazing.
I was shocked as you, um, but it was a very flattering article, not so much the photo, but the, the article was... But no, I, it's, I think it's important for people to understand what is going, you know, what, what has been occurring, uh, hopefully for their benefit. And we still have some to do, but we've done hundreds of miles, still have hundreds of miles to do, but we've got the, the big ones, um, the high-volume ones addressed and we'll continue to work on that. Um, the, um, I also like to express appreciation of the clerk's office making the transition that they've made and the preparation that they're undergoing now for the precinct updates that would lead into local districting and all of the things that are associated with that. So there's a lot of work in front of a lot of departments here, um, through the end of this fiscal year and then certainly through the remainder of the calendar year. So great job, Eddy County, um, working through some tough times and still being proud of who we are and what we do and, and how we do it. So thank you very much.
County Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Cordova.
Um, good news for parents, kid day, is daycare centers reopening under a new name and, uh, owner. Registration actually starts tomorrow at nine AM. Um, I know that they have a Facebook page open, so if anybody is in need of childcare, um, they're gonna be accepting, uh, infants through school-aged children, so that's very great news. Um, aside from that, I wanna express my gratitude to the county as well for working under difficult conditions last year and maintaining services. As, uh, Mr. Davis had explained to me, other counties shut down, you know, there weren't available services, so, um, just really great job for being diligent in what you do and, um, I appreciate you very much.
Uh, I'll keep mine real short, too. Obviously, in the next couple of weeks, there's a lot of kids graduating. Um, it's really exciting to see. It's kind of a bummer for some parents, myself included. We did our little church graduation where they honor the graduates, and there's quite a few from our church, but it's amazing to see out of all those kids graduating, how many of them are, are leaving the state as fast as they can. So again, that's why it's so important to us to continue to fight for Eddy County, for the state, so that when they go get these great educations, they want to come back, uh, a- and use their talents in, in this state and in this county. But, uh, remember those kids graduating, pray for them, that, that all goes, they get done what they need to get done and, uh, pray for the parents, because it's, it's the most miserable thing I think I've ever done in my life so far. So it's gonna be an interesting couple of weeks, but we're proud of the graduates. Um, exciting to see. Good stuff happening in Artesia, obviously. We didn't come in second at state, uh, so it's not, not, not first, but, uh, the boys did a great job, uh, getting where they wanted to be and had a good season, good group of kids. This group graduating was a very, very talented group across the board, sports, um, some of the FFA leaders graduating this year are just incredibly talented kids, um, uh, that we're gonna send out. So we should be real proud of what, what impact they're gonna do on the world wherever they go. Uh, it's gonna be an ECC. Uh, good for Eddy County on these, on Corona lately, obviously, we've seen really good numbers, I think. So, um, as we always say, that doesn't mean let your guard down, don't get crazy, but, uh, keep up the good work and, and hopefully we'll, we'll just continue to see that and be able to maybe open up someday. I know the rest of the states around us are wide open. I think even Colorado dropped their masks and are open, um, so their economy seems to be doing really well. So, uh, we saw our economy slip this year. Um, I think we dropped to thirty-eighth in, in growth, so hopefully we'll open up at some point, um, and, and start, start seeing that, uh, small businesses back and, and really supporting those people. So keep up the good work, really proud of it, um, but be diligent. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Carlson.
Uh, just saw where all kids sixteen and older can get vaccinated. And so I think that's a good move, good step forward, uh, get as many people as we can vaccinated and hopefully our, uh, numbers are going to increase as we...
Yeah, the, uh, to, we just posted, and the city posted as well, um, the clinic on next, is it next, next Monday Memorial Day or the farm?
Farm.
So next Monday, there'll be a clinic and for, you know, for children. Um, and I think it's twelve and up. If you come with the consent or you're registered, um, we'll, you'll be able to get, uh, some of the Pfizer, and they'll also have Moderna there. And then, um, Ms. Jennifer's working on, um, a separate clinic that they're probably gonna do at the high schools to try and encourage additional vaccinations for, for students in that range. So you're absolutely right, Commissioner.
And it's a big move forward to get all...
Get vaccinated.
Vaccinated. Uh, I heard that a lot, well, we can't get it, so now that day's over and it's a new day, and that's good. So, uh, just love to see that we're moving forward on that.
Thank you.
I'd really like to start, believe it or not, by thanking our governor. Uh, the new mask ordinances that are going out are getting real close to the free state of Texas. If you wanna wear a mask, wear one. If you don't, don't wear one. I think everybody will remember in the beginning, Christians were kinda targeted in churches and what have you, and it hasn't been that long ago that that actually went to the fire marshals, capacity numbers on all churches. That was a step in the right direction. Now, the, her, uh, restrictions on some of this, or, you know, there's requirements being totally vaccinated, but there are some exclusions, you know, the jails, the schools, uh, several other organizations. What she did not mention in that was churches. And what I read in this is, you know, churches are free to go for whatever, you know, Christians are no longer being targeted. Uh, the smoky part of my comment will be, does this has to do with she has seen the light or maybe her psychic poll numbers among Christians? Either way, I thank the governor, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Beard. Uh, just one thing pretty, uh, quickly here. Uh, tonight's the school board meeting, six PM, and they're discussing and they're gonna vote on the extension for days, whether it's zero days, ten days, or twenty-five days, I think, for the upcoming school year. Any, um, public involvement is much appreciated there. I have a proud commitment, but, uh, do have somebody going to represent me there, so. Um, anyways, just like to invite everybody to go there. Again, appreciate all the department heads after coming through a rough year, just as kinda has been the, the, the theme of the comments. Really do appreciate everybody being frugal and, and tending to business and, and, uh, we appreciate Jason taking Jess in, in, uh, good character, so. Other than that, I have nothing. I guess we have one more item.
Well, we got a couple more items, yeah. So we, we do have, uh, some items for executive session, so if we could move into executive session.
Entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss Eddy County funds, TDR litigation, and Eddy County intentions there. Motion and a...
Second.
Henry?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What, what did we ask? Did you have, did you have?
No, I, John was asking for how long.
Okay. You guys, yeah, tell us.
Yeah, I, I think thirty minutes.
Okay.
So at ten.
Shall we ta- shall we take a break before and come back at twenty-five after? Is that fine?
Yes.
Okay.
So we need to vote?
Yes.
All right, so we will vote.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
All right, we'll, we'll break and return hopefully at twenty-five after the hour, hopefully.
And if we're not...